Welcome to our Parkway School Board meeting tonight. Would you please stand with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We truly, truly welcome all of you here tonight. It's a special night for us. Tonight, we're recognizing several of our outstanding students with exceptional academic and extracurricular achievements, as well as our programs with the American Heart Association. We're very pleased everyone could join us at this special board meeting. First, I'd like to ask Annie Miller, Principal of West Middle School, to the podium to introduce the Scripps National Spelling Bee co-champion.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Marty, and the Parkway community. I'm very excited to welcome Gokul to our board meeting tonight. It was a thrill to watch the Scripps National Spelling Bee and see Gokul named co-champion. Parkway and the entire St. Louis community beamed with pride on May 28th. Most of you have probably seen numerous stories about Gokul, both on local and national news, Channels 2, 4, 5, 11, radio stations, Post-Dispatch, The Today Show, CNN, CBS, ABC, NBC, The Huffington Post, GQ Magazine, and an appearance on The Jimmy Kimmel Show, and probably much more. Gokul received a special gift from basketball star LeBron James that I'm sure most middle school kids are very jealous about. What most of you have not seen is a video created by Claymont Elementary, so if you could cue that video.
That superficially resembles swallows.
African or European swallows? Eh, never mind. Uh, Sipsaline. Language of origin, please?
Sipsaline is from Greek.
It went from Latin to Portuguese to French, which is an Algonquian language of North America.
Okay. Part of speech?
Sipsaline is an adjective.
Adjective. You really think I have any chance of spelling Sipsaline?
No, I don't.
Thanks. Sipsaline. Sipsaline.
Sipsaline.
Sipsaline.
Well, I'm not so sure about your dream, Gokul, but the important thing is you won the National Spelling Bee, and we are so proud of you. Well, both of you boys have had some great Spelling Bee moments right here in the Claymont pit, and Gokul, this is where it all began for you. What do you remember most from those Spelling Bees?
Well, I got my first taste of a Spelling Bee in third grade. Then after I won my second Bee in fourth grade, some people started to believe that I might have a special talent. So for some extra practice, they sent me into a head-to-head battle against the toughest competitor in the school.
The next word is pheffernus. Pheffernus.
That is correct.
Aw, you were so little back then. You've grown up so much. So tell us, Gokul, were you nervous before the final round of the National Spelling Bee?
Well, I had been there before, so I wasn't too nervous. But, I mean, I must have had, I must have had some anxiety because I had a very strange dream the night before the finals. I dreamed I made it all the way to the championship worlds, but my opponent, my opponent.
Talk about something else for a few minutes. I mean, like, what's your favorite movie? Alex Star, was that watching?
Frozen.
Frozen? The Princesses? Yeah, alright, that's a good one. You have any other favorite movies?
There's really just one.
Okay, okay, Frozen. Well, that's a really good music. What's your favorite song from Frozen?
Let It Go.
Let It Go, Let It Go. Yeah, hey, you know what? I think the people would like it if you would sing so, Let It Go. Sing so.
You would, me too. I can sing.
Oh, seriously, I think everybody would enjoy it.
I can sing.
Come on now, you just have to have confidence in yourself. Oh, you could sing.
I can sing.
Well, I'm sure you're good at some other things, though. I know you're good at spelling and pronouncing things. Hey, tell me, what else are you good at?
Paper cutting.
Paper cutting? Hey, you know what? I want a paper cutting, too. Yeah, what is? Yeah, what I made these. You like it?
No, I don't.
You don't like them?
No, I don't.
Sipsaline. Sipsaline. Sipsaline? Is that seriously a real word? Sometimes I think you just make these words up.
No, I don't.
It seems like no one's ever heard of sipsaline. Sipsaline. Sipsaline? Sipsaline. Have a definition, please?
Sipsaline means of or relating to the swifts, any of numerous small, plainly colored birds constituting the family mammodae that superficially resemble swallows.
African or European swallows? Uh, Sipsaline. Language of origin, please?
Sipsaline is from Greek. Went from Latin to Portuguese to French, which is an Algonquin language.
Okay. Part of speech?
Sipsaline is an adjective.
Adjective. You really think I have any chance of spelling Sipsaline?
No, I don't.
Sipsaline. Sipsaline? S.
Well, I'm not so sure about your dream, Gokul, but the important thing is you won the National Spelling Bee. We are so proud of you.
Thanks to Mr. Aaron Wells, Principal of Claymont Elementary, for sharing that back-to-school video with us. So as you can see, not only he's, Gokul's had an impact on St. Louis, but most importantly, the West community for us. I recently toured some prospective families from India, and they were obviously aware of Gokul and his fame. In addition to secondhand story, we had a teacher that we hired from, I believe, California who found us based on watching Gokul on the Spelling Bee and then looked up Parkway School District. So not only winning the Bee, I think the impact grows farther. I recently met with our Character Council, and we were planning for a September Assembly, and the kids said, "Well, we should get a celebrity." And I said, "Well, who are you thinking of?" And immediately, they said Gokul, who I think is a great tribute to our school and our community, his perseverance, dedication, and hard work to achieve what he has achieved. So congratulations, Gokul. Everyone at the Parkway School District is so proud of you, and we asked Gokul to bring his Scripps Spelling Bee award tonight, trophy tonight. So Gokul, if you could please come forward with your trophy. You want me to hold it for you? I feel like the agent. But thank you, Gokul, for putting us on the map and doing such great things, too.
It is a pleasure to be in front of the board tonight to recognize some more students for some outstanding accomplishments. If you could pull up a first slide. I know that our board president appreciates a little humor, and we found a little chess humor. So if you take a look, we have, "How would you describe the moment you won?" And the king says, "I was moved." And then finally, the real-life application of chess. So you can see the queen talking to the king, saying, "You know, without me, you're nothing." So why play chess? Chess is a pure contest. There's no luck involved. It's challenging, involves thinking and strategy. And Dr. Marty might think this is humorous as well, but I used to play chess as a young kid, and we had some major battles between my dad and I in the living room. But I do think, as far as the skills that you take away, as thinking ahead, anticipating next move, setting up for future maneuvers, is great strategy. Chess is great for all ages and enhances creativity, logical thinking, and one's imagination. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce many of our Missouri State Chess Champions and honorees of the Gateway Chess League. In addition to these recognitions, many of these students have gone on and won multiple awards through local and national chess events. So before we do the individual recognitions, I'd like those students who were with us tonight who have gained, went on and gained national recognition or standing, to please stand and be recognized as a group. So for those that have won national... And now, as we congratulate all our young chess enthusiasts, students, as I call your name, if you're in attendance, please come forward to be congratulated by Dr. Marty, our superintendent, and members of the Board of Education. High school individual Kevin Cow. Kevin? Way back there. Come on, Kevin. Kevin is from Central High, from some of our other high schools, a South High team, and individual recognition. For those students who are here, please come forward. Tom Polgar Schutzen, Liam Polgar Schutzen, Rocky Sundara, and Kevin Sitzer. Please come forward. Our West High team and individual champions, William Tong, Stephen Zhang, George Liu, and Nico Stranquist. Please come forward. Eighth grade and under division for individuals from Northeast Middle, Michael Delfonzo, Andre Crozel, and Grant Johnson. That's from Northeast Middle. Also, eighth grade and under individual from West Middle, Tanyé Shandak and Paul Gibkin. Moving to our sixth grade and under individual from Southwest Middle, Noah Tennant. Some of our elementary individual, fifth grade and under, from Belle Reve, Aiden Johnson. Craig Elementary, Charles Pitt. From Mason Ridge, Wilson Gao. From Riverbend, Isaac Porter. And we have four from Oak Brook, Isabel Yarian, Anye Swaminathan? Nayen Swaminathan. And Ali Saidi are all here. So congratulations to our four individual winners from Oak Brook. Our third grade and under individual winners from Belle Reve, Jaclyn Delfonzo, Taylor Johnson, and Kyle Crozel. They could all come forward. From Mason Ridge, third grade and under, Armin Shandak and Winston Gao. Please come forward. Oh, and Joshua, on the next page, Joshua Galapudi. Congratulations, Joshua. Galapudi, okay. Joshua Galapudi. Carried over to the next name. And our last two, from Riverbend, Caleb Porter and Andrew Porter. So congratulations. All right, guys, congratulations. Please join me in congratulating all these young chess enthusiasts and their family for these outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations to all.
You weren't able to get to your microphone. Gokul, I wanna do a shout-out to you also because you helped recruit one of our new health and PE teachers from New Jersey. He was following you, and he's like, "Oh, this guy's from Chesterfield. Where is Chesterfield?" And then he immediately connected the fact that you are so awesome to an awesome school district, and he's like, "I wanna be there." So, thank you. Yeah, that's kinda cool. President Jacob, Board of Education members, Dr. Marty, Ms. Sover, it is often that we hear the phrase, "Developing capable, curious, and confident students in our mission statement" as a focus of our work in Parkway. However, it is the latter half of the mission statement, "Learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world," that I would like to highlight with our next recognition. The American Heart Association has offered several opportunities for our staff and students to respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world by offering programs and projects that assist the development of a healthy school community. The things our Parkway students are doing go way beyond acquisition of knowledge and skills and go way beyond the classroom. We are developing whole-child development and a sense of being and purpose in our communities and global society. As I tell my own children, "The world does not exist for you, you exist for the world." I would like to introduce to you Ms. Julie Hetterman, who serves as the St. Louis Senior Youth Director for the American Heart Association, to tell you more about how Parkway is active in its pursuit for school and community wellness. Julie has worked with Parkway Schools and staff for nine years in helping implement Jump Rope for Heart, Wear Red Day, and other district wellness initiatives. Please welcome Ms. Julie Hetterman.
Thank you so much, Ron, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. When Dr. Marty and I talked earlier this summer, and I just am really proud, not only as a representative of the American Heart Association, but also a Parkway resident myself. And I wanted to come and recognize a couple things because I think you all need to know above and beyond what Parkway students and staff are doing. And with the, I work with all the school districts in the area, and this past particular year, it's really a way to recognize staff wellness. We hear a lot about student wellness, but obviously, teachers are under a great deal of stress. Their plates are always very, very full. So there was actually an award that is created by the American Heart Association, and it's always recognized businesses and organizations. But this year, schools were encouraged to apply for this award. So I'd like to have Leah Gonzalez come up here, please, and Ron also. Tonight, it is a staff wellness. It is for the Parkway staff. It's called the Exemplary Gold Award, Fit Friendly Award. So I'd like to present this to you all. And Leah is your onsite wellness coordinator, and I met with her, and also your retired Lisa Harnicker, from the Director of Nursing. And they really felt it was important to kind of profile the great things that the staff are doing for health and wellness. So this is really an award that can be applied for every year, and I have no doubt that Parkway will continue to excel in that area. And then briefly, as Ron said, with Jump Rope and Hoops for Heart, I can't thank you all enough. There are so many parents and families and students that really donate from the bottom of their heart for our mission. And our mission really revolves around building healthier lives, free of cardiovascular disease and stroke. That's why I love working with the schools, because when you see the, from the little guys all the way up to seniors in high school, these guys are helping create healthier habits. So quickly, I'd like to recognize some of your top schools, but as the PE teachers are coming forward, I wanted to kind of give you an idea, and I gave you a handout of what the Parkway Schools have done, and you can see through the donations raised. Just incredible. We could not do our mission without the support of all of the families, students, and staff at your Parkway Schools. So last year, this past year, of all the schools in the St. Louis area, collected over a million dollars with all of the schools. Parkway was a big part of that because you all helped collect over $75,000 just in the Parkway School. So please give yourselves a huge round of applause. I'd like, for, just quickly, I wanted to just give a shout-out to a couple of the folks that are here tonight, and they will get additional recognition down at the convention in Missouri at the lake. We've got one hobbling here. For all of the donations raised in Missouri, they are some of your top schools. Also, just within St. Louis, there are some of your top schools. So I'd like to recognize Hannah Woods, they are not here tonight, but Nick Tenertjes. Ross Elementary collected over $8,460. So that's Amy Sidner, Kyle King, and Jeff McGee, who will now be going on to Oak Brook because wonderful, Ellen has, is retiring, but Oak Brook last year collected over, yeah, that's why the big smile's on her face, over $9,000, $9,182. But a little side note, we looked back through our records because our computers only go back to 1991, and Ellen was doing Jump Rope for Heart before that. But of the years that we have records for, Oak Brook Elementary, through her guidance, collected over $115,433. So countless, countless, countless lives have been so impacted through the St. Louis area. Belle Reve Elementary this year collected over $10,000, and Randy Fant, with his sidekick, Bill Bunton, collected over $10,850 at Mason Ridge. So I cannot thank you all enough. What you all do stays in this area, so thank you on behalf of the American Heart Association. Look forward to another great year, so, thank you.
recognitions. We're honored to have students like this and the parents who stand behind them and help them. At this time, we're gonna take a brief break to make sure that there's... At this time, we're going to take a brief break to make sure that there's no rain coming in. We have the facilities guy with us. We appreciate very much you being here and recognizing and helping us honor these students. Thank you again. We'll take a brief break for about 10 minutes.
I am not just a cust-
I hate to interrupt everybody's conversation, but we'd like to move on with this board meeting tonight. Wasn't that special with Gokul and those chess champions, especially some of the little ones? They were just darling. My goodness. I wouldn't want to pit myself against any of them, especially if they won. And our congratulations to the many schools that participated in the Fit Friendly Award, and that kind of impact in the community is commendable and will save lives. So congratulations to all of you. We have a few additions and corrections. Let me read these. 6.01, addition of agenda item 11.38, approval of purchase of athletic trainer service. 6.02, addition of agenda item 11.39, approval of St. Louis Metro APWA Salt Cooperative. 6.03, addendum to agenda item 11.03, approval of personnel items. 6.04, addition of invoices to agenda item 11.29, approval of request for approval of professional services, Greater St. Louis and Association of Umpires. 6.05, addition of agenda item 11 dot forty, approval of the contract with Craig Home Care for 2015-2016. And 6.06, modification of motion on agenda item 11.28, approval of purchase of SOD and Sprigs, supply and installation services, authorization increase, bid number fifteen dash twenty-four. 7.0, citizen statements. We do have one citizen statement. If you would come to the podium now, Bradley Harmon, and state your name and address. And we like to keep this to three minutes if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob, and members of the board. Dr. Marty, my name is Bradley Harmon. I'm at 5585 Pershing, Suite 150, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one one two. I'm president of Local 6355, the Communications Workers of America. With me today is Lawrence Sykes, who is the Parkway Schools' area representative for Local 6355, the Communications Workers of America. As you know, the CWA represents support staff and custodial employees at Parkway School District. I've got a copy of my statement in writing for your review later on, and I'll just read it and be very brief. As you're aware, CWA 6355 requested a closed meeting with the board about a matter related to the application and enforcement of the labor agreement between the union and Parkway. CWA understands that it is the board's prerogative to decide whether or not to agree to such a request under the terms of the labor agreement. We are here today to express our profound disappointment that the board refused our request for a closed session meeting. CWA has strived to maintain a cooperative relationship with Parkway Schools because we believe that is in the best interest of Parkway's community, students, and employees. The refusal of this board to agree to the first request that CWA has submitted for such a meeting in memory is a profound disappointment. We have many things that we work together on. Each time we interact has an impact on future interactions. We are hopeful that the board has thoroughly reviewed our requests, and that the damage to the relationship caused by the refusal of the board to meet with the union on a matter of major importance to its employees can be repaired as we continue to work together. Thank you.
You will?
Who should I give a copy of the statements to?
Nikki here, she'll make sure that we have it, and we'll have a response for you in writing also. Thank you, too. I also want to recognize that we have with us here tonight, I think it's troop eight forty-eight, is that correct? And you're part of West Middle, is that correct?
The troop is quickly approaching our fiftieth year charter through Highcroft Elementary.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And all of these young scouts are working, citizens, and even paratroopers.
I know as a scoutor that you'd like there to be some discussion tonight. I can't tell you that it'll get hot and heated. We hope that it won't.
We don't need anything hotter heated. Just normal business.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point oh, approval of agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, August 5th, 2015?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Nine point oh, resolutions. There are none today. Ten point oh, communications. I'd like to call on Lisa Meredith, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, to make introductions. And then if she would be followed by Chelsea Watson, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, to make additional introductions.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be here this evening to introduce three new members of the Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Team. And I will start with Michelle Howren. Michelle comes to us most recently from the Liberty School District, where she served as the dropout prevention coordinator. Prior to that, Michelle was a high school English teacher. Michelle studied at University of Nebraska, where she got a bachelor's in sociology and a master's in curriculum instruction, and then went on to study at Northeast Missouri State University, where she got her educational specialist degree in school administration. It has been such a pleasure to watch Michelle through the interview process, all the way through the work that she's currently doing. As the final step in our interview process, we had the final candidates come and spend a day at Fern Ridge. And it was evident from that day how passionate Michelle is about relationships with students and with adults. I've been able to observe her at the Fern Retreat and her interactions, and she is a listener, and she always puts what's best for students first. We are excited to have Michelle as the coordinator of Fern Ridge.
Thank you. Not even going to try to bother putting this down, but thank you so much for the kind words. And I'm very excited to be here. It was kind of a crazy four last week, moving here from Kansas City, but we still are getting settled. My husband is extremely happy because he was a Cards fan in Kansas City for thirteen years. So we do feel at home. This is a dream job for me. I love working with disenfranchised and at-promised students. So I'm looking forward to a wonderful school year and working with all of our students at Fern. So, thank you.
Oak Brook, right? Your family? Ren. Ren, I'm sorry. Well, the South area, Ren. Okay.
Yes, so moved into the district as they moved from Kansas City. So glad to have you as a parent as well. Now, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Abdelazam. Jennifer? Seems to be a pattern that I often welcome people home. Jennifer is a proud Parkway South Patriot graduate, and she is coming back to Parkway via New York. Yeah, okay, boys. We are excited to have Jen. She received her Bachelor's of Psychology and a Master's of Elementary Education from Truman State, and then went on to get advanced certifications in building and district leadership. While in New York, Michelle served as a classroom teacher in -- or Michelle, I'm sorry, Jen.
That's my sister's name, so it was natural.
Jen served in New York as a classroom teacher for -- in third, fourth, and fifth grade, and then most recently, prior to coming here, as a math instructional coach, where she supported over twenty elementary buildings in New York City. She also supported the Gifted and Talented Program, and also served as a liaison between the preschool program in New York City and the elementary school. So her well-rounded experience will help her as she serves. I want to read just a little bit of something that was in one of her letters of recommendation. In her capacity as the mathematics instructional coach, Ms. Azam worked closely with over twenty of our schools to build their capacity around exemplary instructional practices that resulted in improved student outcome. And then the person who wrote the letter went forward to share the results. Within a year, increases of nearly ten percent increase in their math scores, not only for all students, but for also students that you would typically expect not to, that trends would show us, don't typically score as well. And Jennifer worked with teachers to ensure that they were reaching all. So we are excited to have her here to help us in that endeavor as well. Jen?
Now I get to be a Yankees fan living in St. Louis. Parkway is the reason why I was able to accomplish everything in my life that I was able to accomplish, and the reason why I'm standing here today. So the fact that I get to be back here giving back to Parkway at this level, to be part of this community, is amazing to me. So thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. And I, too, wanted my kids to be Parkway kids. So my three children are now Parkway kids. I have a friend who teaches in this building, and she describes us as the trifecta, parents, graduates, and employees. We have Parkway pride running through our blood. So I am so happy to be back here. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Howren.
Well, and another Parkway South grad, Amy Belding.
She just said, "You forget you."
Amy will be serving as our coordinator of career and technical education and assisting with choice programs. She most recently comes to us from South High School, where she served as a business and marketing teacher, and also led the A-plus program at South High. She was there for nine years. Amy studied with her undergrad at Mizzou and then finished that at Webster, then went on to receive a Master's of Art in Teaching from Lindenwood, and then a second Master's of Educational Administration from Southwest Baptist. And when I think about Amy and everything she brings, one of the things that really impressed us in the interview process, and I had to remember back a few years, when we first brought A-plus to Parkway, Amy was a leader at the district level to really help us get it up and running so that we could support all of our students who are interested in receiving that scholarship to be able to do that. I think another thing that Amy brings to this position is her passion, her passion for all students. She was really excited to take this position, but at the same time was a little heartbroken and had concerns because she's been serving as a softball coach at South High, and she had already promised the students that she would coach them. And so that sense of responsibility and relationship really was very evident in our conversations around that transition. So I know with that passion, she is going to just do amazing work to help us continue to grow our CTE programs and other choice programs. Amy Belding, coordinator of CTE.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for this opportunity. As a student, thirteen years in Parkway, started at Carmen Trails, I really feel that my curiosity was fostered through the Parkway School District. And I started my career in the advertising world and actually came back to education. And I have been there the last nine years, and I do really feel that Parkway was the reason that that happened, similar to what Jen said. And then the other thing is, I'm also very competitive, and you'll probably hear Desi say that as well. And my competition definitely carries over to this job. So as hard as it was for me to leave the classroom and coaching, I feel like it's going to be my onus to be competitive in my new position and to help provide opportunities for our students in CTE and choice. So I really welcome this opportunity, and I thank you for it. So, thank you.
Well, just to continue the South High tradition here, hi, Stan.
Glad to know I'm among friends here. Good evening, President Jacobs, Vice President Mogulman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. It is with great pleasure that I stand here before you to introduce you to Dr. Robin Wallen, our new Director of Health Services. Robin, will you join me here? Robin has had a great career thus far, a great career in taking care of others. Early in her career, she was a pediatric nurse practitioner. She has served as a school nurse in an elementary school, a middle school, and in a federally qualified community health center. In January of 2014, she began a CDC Public Health Fellowship in the Division of Population Health. During this year-long fellowship, she reviewed data, provided clinical expertise to a team looking at issues of chronic disease management in schools, and she developed a toolkit to help divisions better address the needs of students and food allergies. And later this month, she will be giving a webinar on her profound work around food allergies. Her most recent position was the Health Services Coordinator in the Alexandra Public Schools, where she spent approximately ten years. In May, she graduated with her doctorate degree from the Nursing School of Yale, where she gave the commencement speech. During the interview process, we talked on the phone, we Skyped, and then Robin joined us here in Parkway for a day. We visited two schools. I introduced her to the nurses and left her. And she spent time getting to know Parkway at a very, very focused level, with kids coming in and out of the room with our Parkway nurses. And I must tell you, through the entire interview process, and the two nurses who I sought feedback from after Robin spent time, was absolutely incredible. And lastly, I'd like to share one of the interview questions that Robin asked the team via Skype. Robin asked, "Why would someone want to move to St. Louis?" The answer from one of the team members was immediate. Why? We're the home of the St. Louis Cardinals. So, Desi, thank you for helping Robin truly know how serious we take Cardinal Nation. And as we stay in Student Services, Mike Matheny was all for Robin. Robin, welcome to Parkway.
So I'm thrilled to be here. I'm thrilled to be supporting school health and school nurses. That's my passion. The thing that has most surprised me is how supported I feel, and how supported I hear from other people all around me that they feel, and how much they enjoy being a part of Parkway. So I am looking forward to helping keep kids healthy and safe and ready to learn, and to working with our school nurses and our school health team. So, thank you so much.
Thank you both of you very much for those introductions to wonderful additions to our staff and our leadership here. We certainly welcome Michelle, Jennifer, Amy, and Robin. We look forward to the impact that you'll have. And as Matheny said or was told, to learn something new every day, we know we're going to learn a lot of things from you. And I think in the process, Michelle will find out, we have pretty good barbecue here in St. Louis. Jennifer will find out what it's like to play in the World Series. And Amy's already here, so she's already converted. And Robin, we're just delighted to impact you can have on nurses and kids here at Parkway. So thank you to all of you very much. Ten point oh, communications. We've already done the introduction. We have 10.02, our calendar of meetings. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 26th, 2015, at 7:00 PM here at Central Middle School, with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 PM. Ten point oh three, board liaison reports. Is there anyone that would like to present any of the things they've done? We'll start with Beth.
I get to talk about Mike Matheny. Last week, we had the honor of listening to Mike Matheny talk about leadership, and he brought so much to the table. I have to say, I was really impressed with his public speaking ability and with his message. And I left so inspired. So I want to thank Dr. Marty and whoever else had a hand.
Desi.
Desi, right? Desi and Desi's friend. And we want to thank everybody. It was really, really a great day. And I noticed the Yankee hat.
Welcome to Parkway.
Anyway, so that was really great, and kudos to you for doing that.
I had the privilege of welcoming back the new staff members last Thursday. Thank you. Filled up the whole cafeteria at South Middle. It was a great morning. I know they had a lot of work to do that day, and a lot of bright shining faces in the crowd. So it was a great privilege to welcome them.
Thank you, Dee. Anything over here?
I just want to share a little bit about the annual school law seminar that Chris and Deborah and Keith and several administrators attended just recently. It's kind of discouraging to hear all of the legalese regarding issues that take place in schools. And when you look at it from the positive side, basically what we're trying to attempt to do, and we hope that we accomplish that, is to do what's right for our students. That's the key. That's the bottom line. But the topics that were discussed dealt with the Fourth Amendment, student searches, dealt with bullying, copyright laws, trademarks, and public domain, logos and mascots. It seems that there's a franchise on your logo and mascots, and other people would like to use those at times for theirs. So basically, those were the main topics. It's a refresher, but there's so much updating regarding the laws. And the key to it all, basically, is, you know, we can have all these laws, and we can have policies, et cetera, but most importantly, they have to be updated and be current and relevant. But most importantly is that people need to know them to stay out of trouble, to do what's right for our students. So basically, that's the bottom line. And it's always good to attend these because it really brings to mind that we have a responsibility to know the law and to really be there for our students and help prevent issues that come up with their day-to-day lives in our schools and life in general.
Thank you very much, Sam. Anyone else? In addition to some of these meetings that I attended with other board members, there were two more this morning that I attended with some of our leadership, and that was the kickoff, welcome back for Transportation Department that just continues to do a great job. Boy, that we're excited this morning, and had a good morning of things that they were going through as they get ready to start the new year. And it's amazing when you think the cargo that they transport and how well they do it and make those kids feel special. I remember last year, we were on a bus there with one bus driver. She ran a pretty tight ship and kept me and Keith in our seats most of the time. But it's, that was wonderful. And also then we hurried over so we could be part of Food Services, and they're getting ready for the year. And it's pretty challenging when you think of some of the dietary things that they have to adhere to, federal laws, and then just trying to make sure that kids like what they have placed before them. But they do a great job, and it's a great team. We're glad that those departments and many others in Parkway really make this a great family. And I'm just glad that at the all administrators, we didn't have Jim Edmonds, too, because that would have been too much eye candy for some of these people. Ten point oh four, board subcommittee reports. There have been none. Ten point oh five, upcoming subcommittee meetings. There is a TLA Subcommittee Meeting, August 11th, at 3:00 PM at ISC. And our consent items. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented here in the August 5th, 2015 board materials?
So move.
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there anything within those consent items that you would want to pull to action or closed? Very well. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. So now you're ready to start Twelve dot oh, action items. There are none. Thirteen point oh, policy review. There are none. Fourteen point oh, reports. Fourteen point oh one, our 2015 summer projects and facilities review. Mike Mertens, you scheduled that rainstorm here, and nothing happened. So congratulations, and we look forward to your report now. He's only got a few days left to button everything up, and it's coming together nicely.
Good evening, President Jacobs, Vice President Mogulman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Secretary Stover. It's good to be here. It's good to be dry. We don't want to be running around putting buckets under things at board meetings. That doesn't go very well.
No.
Dr. Marty asked me to put on a brief, maybe not so brief, presentation tonight on where, I think what my wife said was, "What I did on my summer vacation." So... Okay. I got a beep, and let's try again. Hit the, there we go. So for the summer of 2015, we put in capital projects, six major projects totaling approximately thirteen and a half million dollars. We did a number of security projects that are at various stages, and we'll get in a little bit of detail on that. That total is about $3.8 million, which will be spent over the next 24 months. And then technology, I'm speaking for Jason here, and I actually chatted with him before I threw these numbers up, is looking to spend about $3 million over the next 12 months. And that includes expanding existing storage and network, an area network, upgrade network switches, and expanding wireless infrastructure. Key focus areas for 2014-2015 were meet commitments to fire code officials. And what that means is, we put fire sprinkler systems in four schools, four, this being one of them here. Wrap up the installation of the classroom walls, and that was the Highcroft project. And if you remember, in the 2008 bond issue, we came to you with two versions for our Carmen Trails, an eight million version and about a $1.6 million version. And we went with the $1.6 million, which meant that Highcroft was moved into this bond issue. And we wanted to make sure we took care of Highcroft in the first year of the 2014 bond issue. And then beginning and working on improving school security across the board. And we'll get into more detail on the four major classifications that we worked on this summer. And I got a little too fast. There we go. But before we get into the projects, I did want to talk about each of the groups. Not only do we do a lot of project work, but we do a lot of other work in our facilities group. And start with custodial. And this year, we went and do some major training. So we call it five and five. We had five days of training over five weeks, thirty custodians in a class. And we did, so all of our custodians went through five days of intense training, two in the classroom, videos. We worked with proper cleaning techniques. But even more importantly, we talked about accountability. accountability. We talked about our school, not our area, so that, you know, we're working on that world-class customer service, and we're trying to, to work with our, with our teams at all levels. And that was a big part of the, the classroom piece. And then three days of, on the job training. So those schools that had 30 extra custodians for three days got a little bit of a boost on cleanliness in some areas, and, and, and the principals were appreciative. We also had the cleanest school awards, and this year's overall winner was Sorrento Springs. Early Child, uh, Early Child had won the last two years' overall, and they're still one of the best, the best west side, but Ben down at Sorrento Springs, that custodian, did a marvelous job. I mean, he's really set the standard for where everybody should be, and we're really proud of, of Ben and his team down at Sorrento. West High was the high school, West Middle was the middle school, and then Sorrento Craig and Early Child had were the three elementaries. This is a neat program. This is the third year, and it started getting to where, it's where, it's where I wanted to be, because not only do I have head custodians want to win, I also have principals who want to win. And clean schools come from principals who are engaged with the custodial teams. So it's really exciting to see that, that group coming together at all parts. And, and I don't know who's going to win next year, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be different ones, because people want to win. They also want the trophy. Grounds, it was an interesting summer for grounds, because June was the wettest on record, which means everything grows. So that usually this time of year, everything, all of our cool season grasses are dormant, and my grounds teams are doing other things other than cut grass every five days. And not only do the grass, as the grass grow, and the weeds are growing just as fast or faster as, if I look in my backyard and around my deck, I'm pulling more weeds than I could , knew could grow this time of year. So that has given us a little bit of aggravation from the grass cutting side, but it's also given us aggravation from the fact that any ground, any projects we have coming out of the ground, we haven't been able, June was pretty well shot. It affected the project out, out here at Central Middle, it affected the softball field down at Central High, it affected all of our plumbing jobs, because all of those, those jobs, basically I'd have a new fire main coming, which means we had to dig up, put in a six-inch fire main off, off the main off the street, and every time we dug, the ground would fall back in on the next train. So June was, was, was a difficult month, but we've been able to, we've been able to work through it. On the athletic side, it's too wet to cut the sod to put on the athletic fields, but it, we can get it, and we get the sod down at south around the Cape Girardeau area. When it's dry enough to cut it, it's too wet up here to prep the fields yet to done. So it was just a very trying year due to weather for a couple of different areas across And last but not least is our maintenance group. They picked up a couple of late-minute projects, the largest being renovating the preschool at North High. We did exterior LED lighting replacements with Eric's group, put security film on windows, working on classroom locks. We did some swimming pool code work at both south and west, where we emptied the pools out and, and did some work there, cleaned them up. Lot of casework and shelves across the district, HVAC coil cleaning and filter changes across all of our schools. I am too fast. So let's get into the safety and security projects. We had four main categories, security window film being the first, and basically the easiest for us to get on top of and get moving. Our in-house painters are doing the work. They were actually trained and certified in installation of security film. We sent them over to Illinois to work with a company that was putting window film on schools over there, to get them trained and certified. We've installations are complete in all the front entrances, which was our first marching order, first phase of, of the safety film. And just so you know, safety film goes on in two parts. You put the film on, it has to cure for approximately a week, and then we come in with a mechan, what we call a mechanical caulk. So it's, you'll, you'll notice that it's a thick bead of caulk that goes all the way around the safety film. What that does, it actually attaches the film to the, to the window frame. So it's an, actually, it's a mechanical connection, because if you didn't have that and you came out and pushed the, the window film, it would just fall in. So that actually ties it and, and makes the system, and that has to be certified also from the, from the supplier. Once we figure out where we're at on total cost on the first phase, we'll go back to SAT, let them know where we stand, and ask them what our next steps are. Do we want to take that money and use it for other projects, or do we want to expand and do some more safety film, and if so, what are the criteria to move forward on that? Classroom lock sets, installations are complete on the south area elementaries and Highcroft, because we put all new doors in the new classrooms, so we said, let's go ahead and put the new lock sets in Highcroft and get that one off the list. South Middle and Southwest are next, and then followed by the high school. Aphone installations, we were asked to go ahead and install Aphones at the high schools at the end of the school year, and I'm, we just finished west today. Pardon? I'm sorry. The Aphones are the entry, door entry cameras that you've, we have in all the elementary schools and the middle schools. And we put, uh, we've put those, or installed those now on all of the high schools. We worked with the principals and asked them where they would like that. Three of the high schools have one on their main entrance, and south, because of the layout, has two. And we've also told the principals, as you get into your year, if it makes sense to add another one at a location, we'll work with you on that, and, and to make sure that things are working for your school. Initially, they're looking, because it has to be manned, and someone has to be watching, being able to see where the people kind of, the schools are mostly opting to go with the one at, at the outside. Electronic door access, and this is, this is systems we'll be putting in to replace our fobs, the fob locks that we use. Software's installed, we're working with our IT department on that piece. We've had a proximity card logistics meeting, so you would say, what's that? Instead of a fob, we'll be using a, a proximity card, which will have your ID on it, and it's the same thickness as an ID, and so that will replace your ID. The issue is, how do we get all the names of the folks that are at a school into the system, onto a card, into their hands, so that we can make sure that we minimize the impact on the school and their security, be able to get into their buildings? So we met with HR, we're working through some issues there. Great meeting with, with, with Amy and, and her team on that, and we think we've got a plan. And just to make sure that we do it right, we're going to be rolling out the plan first at operations for two reasons. The systems that were, we put in will actually talk to our, our in-house wireless system. There's two systems. You can buy a system that you put a proprietary wireless system in, or you can put a system in that talks to your existing wireless system. I think we'll probably have some issues getting the two to talk to initially, so we're going to put it actually on the door outside my office where there's a fob, because I can get around through other doors and see if we can, and there's, and there's a wireless point right there outside that door, and we'll work the troubleshooting there, get operations up and running, then we'll work with Amy's team and set what we call the road show up. We're actually going to bring the camera out to the school, take the pictures, set the IDs up, get everything set up and go. So we'll work that at operations first, so that it's a low impact on the district, and we're going to do it at admin. That'll probably, and we're, we're risky there, that's, that's going to be a high impact on the district, but that'll be our second place. And get those two down, and then we'll be rolling that out across the district then, starting with the west area. So, and just so you know, what we did is, we had four major areas, safety film, door locks, electronic access points and cameras. And we have four areas, north, south, central, and west. So each one, and each area started with one major category, and then we go alphabetically, elementary first, middle schools and high schools. That way, it's fair, and, and we have a system, and, and everybody was fine with that. And then finally, we have our security cameras at the middles and high schools. The NVR data storage is to be installed this fall. You should be getting board rec on, on that purchase here, and I don't want to speak for Jason, but in the next six weeks, I guess, you know, probably late, late August, early September, then we'll get that, that hardware installed up at admin in the, in the IT area. And then we'll start installing cameras at Northeast Middle, so that'll be our first. It's a middle school, it's 48 cameras, 50 cameras. It'll be a good start for us, and we plan on bringing that system up while we take the DVR system down. So the difference between the two systems is, today, the DVR is resident at the school. The new system, the, the network video recorder, so you have a digital video recorder and a network video recorder. Under the new system, the network video recorder will be resident in admin, okay? Just like the elementary's are. And what we'll be doing is, when we take one camera down, we'll plug it into the system. Hopefully, when we plug it in a new system, everything works. We expect a learning curve. And we'll be bringing one system up while we bring the other down, so that the, the schools will always have camera where they have it. They'll just have to look at two systems while we're making this swap over. And I guess we're going to start over there at Northeast. Got a few before and after shots. This is Highcroft Ridge. Highcroft Ridge is a total floor to ceiling renovation similar to the Carmen. And Dr. Marty and I took the, we were over there when about half of it was done. It's all done now, we're moving back in. Project has gone very well, and we started moving everything back in. Mayflower started the moves on Monday, and we were having custodians follow and do the cleanup. Everything seems to be moving along. There was a little before shot with the folding walls, and then an after shot with the walls and the smart board. It's, what everyone says, we were walking with Aaron also, and everybody says this is, it's amazing how big the rooms feel, even though it's the same space. It's sort of neat. But anytime we get to do one of these, it's fun, because you're really making an impact on, on the kids with the teachers. It's just one of those things, when you do a lot of rooftop units, yeah, we're making an impact, but you don't see it. This is, this is pretty cool. And we also took the gym down, took the old floor out, put a new floor in, and, and that'll be all ready to go for, for when the children come back next week. Not going to show a whole lot of pictures on the fire sprinkler jobs, because you can't tell there are fire sprinklers up there, so there's really not a lot to see, but to give you a little bit of idea, some of the, the bigger piping work that needed to be done, six-inch pipes coming up, had to dig them up through, come off the fire main off by the street, bring them into the building, and then basically set everything back up. Those white lines across the top, those, that's the sprinkler lines that are going across the white ceiling. So everything that we tried to put in that was in a classroom was painted white, and they really, if you know what you're looking at, you'll see it. But if, otherwise, we try to get them to blend in, and just part of, just part of the learning environment. This is Northeast Middle, give you a little bit of an idea of what it looks like when it's been raining all through June, and then when it's dry and we're getting ready to put it back together, but it really was a muddy mess. And this is the type of work we had to do on, on all four of the sprinkler jobs to get the piping into the building. And we're constantly fighting to get pumps in there, pumping the water back out, try to get it dry up as fast as we can, continue getting the work on and get everything inspected, and keep it moving forward. We also upgraded the elevator at Northeast Middle, and it's ready to go. We have a slight jurisdictional issue between the state and the county that we're working through. We, I think, is the inspector going to be there tomorrow, Scott? Is the inspector's going to be there tomorrow, so we hope to have everything worked out and, and then they'll let us use the elevator. But it's functioning, it's ready to go, it's far better than what we had. We just have a little bit of a jurisdictional issue that we're working through with the, with the authorities. This is Hannah Woods, we put the fire sprinklers there, but we also renovated, renovated the reception area where you come right into the front of the area, and it really turned out nice, and Patrick's really excited about it. It really spruces up the front of that school, and it's, and it's also very functional for the secretaries when they come in. So it's going to really set a focal point up and be able to bring parents and kids in when they come in and get them in the right way. Hannah went really well, it's all cleaned up, it's all ready to go. Good project down there. It, actually, all the projects were good. The bigger ones just take a little longer to wrap up. Central Middle, I don't know if you guys had a chance to stop in and take a look at the nurses area right here, but it's done, ready to go. That's, that's a picture I took yesterday morning. Looks great, there were two nurses in there, they were just ecstatic, and it's, again, it's a, it's a neat little project. And then we also did fire sprinklers throughout all of the areas. If you walk into one of the classrooms, you look at the ceiling, there's a little white disc up there, flat, can't even tell there's a fire sprinkler in there. So I mean, it's a, doesn't make great photography for, for before and after shot, but, but it's all done, it looks good. Oops, too fast. And then, we're out of the ground out back, so this is the steel for our fine arts and the area for fitness that we're working on. So we got the steel up, that shot was taken before the, the corrugated roof was on, so the, actually, the corrugated roof is on now, and they're making progress. So once we get out of the ground and get the steel up, then we can start to rock and roll a little bit. And so that project's on its way to, to move. It was not ever planned to be finished by the end of the summer, it was always going to be a project that was going to be going into the fall. And this is the stadium at South High after we pulled all of the old concrete off. The reason we did this one, the concrete had, concrete had deteriorated to the point where it was a safety concern. And that's what she looked like in late May, I mean, late June, and that's what she looks like now. It really turned out nice, and, and it's one of those things that just, you know, so it's always neat when you get a good project like that. It's outside, it's not all fancy and stuff, but sure is a, is a nice-looking stadium now, and it's safe. And we upgraded all of the handrails and, and everything else to code, so that it meets current codes. Now, this is a project we did back in March, April, and this is the North High chiller. And I have to tip my hat to, to the team on this, because it was, it was one of the projects that, that the chiller that was there, we, one of the things you have to give us credit for is that we really run it till it dies. And this one had died, and it wasn't going anywhere. And so the guys put together a quick project, we, we came in and fortunately, you, you all approved the purchase of the chiller, then we came back with the rest of the project. And we were able to get this in in time for map testing. That was because they needed the library and some things. So we were able to get the project in, up, running. It's been running very well, there's a fence around it now, it's, you don't even know it's there if you, if you don't know what you're looking for. So it was a good little project for us, and, and, and the team did it on pretty short This is a little bit before I get, I'm sure you all know what this is. It used to be Kinder Care red, and now it's Parkway brown, black. And, and I think it looks pretty good, that color. This is a project that the, the maintenance team, custodial team, grounds team took on. No, I don't think any contractors used on this, it was all our folks, from changing out the ceilings to making the new casework, the plumbing, all the painting, inside and out. Grounds worked on the sidewalk, the fencing from North High, cleaning up the grounds. Our custodial folks came in, the tile floors and carpets were in good shape, but they, they stripped them, waxed them, got everything ready to go. So just a neat project that, that my team's very proud of, they did a nice job on it. And, and I think it's a class facility now for our new preschoolers when they come in. Good job for, for, for the team. Other projects, like I mentioned earlier, LED exterior lighting replacements. The team's Parkway electricians and Bob from Eric's group have replaced 900, approximately, I thought it was like approximately 915 lights, maybe 913, maybe 915, 960, but 915 lights. Let's, 915 wall packs and the parking lot lights over the summer since we started on that project. So we've got, we're in three phases, A and B, they're both complete on wall packs and parking lot lights. C is going to be kicking back in here as we get into the school year. And then we've got a lot of little can lights and things we have to cut back and finishing up. Sanded and refinished the gym floor at Central High, so if you get a chance to go down and check the big gym out at Central High, it looks beautiful. Carpet replacements, you're going to notice, some of us are going on a tour tomorrow, so you're going to notice some, some stylish carpet out there. We actually have patterns, we're getting, we're using a lot more tile, flooring, floor tile, which is neat for two things. It gives you a, a chance to break up the pattern a little bit and sort of get a little pizzazz, but also if you do have a major spill or something spills and burns, we can pull the floor tile up, drop another one in, and keep right on going. So it gives us a little flexibility there. I think it's cool, because it really does, instead of the belly blue... I think it's cool because it really does, instead of the belly blue, we're going with, we give, we've got four or five different colors and three or four different patterns we can do and mix and match a little bit. So I'm hoping that that will give our schools a little bit more of a pop. Asphalt drive improvements at West High, that's, the back drive was completed back by the stadium. We also did some work over at West Middle on the circle up on top. And we didn't need this rain because we're also doing some work down on the back end of West Middle. They used to run the buses back there and the asphalt started doing this. And so we're cutting all that out, replacing that, and that'll be done before school starts and be safer back there on the backside. We also did a project that we weren't planning on doing. We did the Ren Hall gym roof replacement. That it's a sheet roof that basically had just seen the end of its life, which was due to be replaced. Again, we're pushing it to the limit. It was due to be replaced next year on a major roofing bond issue project. But Chris Hagan, our roofer, was up there and he says, Mike, I can't hold this anymore. It's billowing up. And we said, let's go ahead and we got money aside to set aside a bond issue. Let's get it done now. And so we did that one. That was a quick job we did in July. And that's complete and, and that area is now secure and watertight. We're also working on the Central High softball dugouts. I don't know if you've been by to see those, but we have dugouts up. We've got some work left to do on them. It's, we don't like pushing to the end, but this was one of those jobs that due to a couple of things, weather and a couple of other things, got shoved off and we just, we're getting it wrapped up and we're going to be ready for Red and White Night, which is the, I think, the 12th or the 13th. But we'll, we'll be wrapping that job up over the weekend and should be good to go. They're actually practicing on the field. The dugouts were actually, roofs were up so that they could practice on Monday. And so they were practicing on the field while a lot of guys were stretching some fence on the second dugout. I think everything, I think we're going to be good to go. And then finally, Henry, we replaced, oh, Mike, not finally, I don't know, on this slide, we're finally, Henry water main replacement. Since I've been here in my 13th year, the, we've had four water main breaks at Henry. And it's just an old, it's the original line into the building. And when we, when we had the fourth one here in May, we clamped it. And I said, tell me what it's going to cost, at least give me from the valve box through the asphalt. This is a $23,000 job. I said, as soon as summer school is out, let's dig it up, let's get it fixed. Because it's just going to continue to break until we do it right. And so we did, that was a job that was not anticipated, but we just took on it, got it done. So they'll have more reliable water going into this next year. And then two more high school stadium scoreboards. We're working on North's now. My, my understanding is we've got the, the footings in over there. They're working on pulling the fiber. And the North High press box, which goes with this project, that project is, the windows are in. Our guys are working over there. Roofing is going to be going up next week, next week. Scott's giving me a head nod there. So that'll be our first large new scoreboard on, on the high schools. And so that's working out pretty well. Moving forward, our 2015, 2016 projects have been identified. We're going through school previews. Some basic design works underway. North High master plan is close to completion. And detailed design is scheduled to begin in the fall. And then we'll start construction next year on North High, which will be a multi-year project because it's, that's a large one. Before I get to not just a, do I have any questions?
Um, I, I went by the Central High softball fields and I saw when they were torn down, when the dugouts were torn down. And I noticed they tore down the shed, the storage shed. Are they rebuilding a shed or some kind of storage area for the girls?
Yep. The shed was supposed to, it's supposed to go up either today or tomorrow.
Great.
So that, it's been ordered, the pad's in place. And yeah, they're getting a new shed. It's, we're just waiting for it to come in.
Great, thank you.
On the new security cameras that are going up, can you talk a little bit more about the data storage? How long will the data be stored for?
Generally, our, we try to go for two weeks, two weeks of storage. And that's, that's just a variable of how much storage we buy. So, and storage is cheap, but generally we find, you know, is that when an incident occurs, oh, was that right? Was it two weeks? Okay.
So we're in the process of designing the storage for the new camera solution. And that, the storage we will design will account for a minimum of two weeks, if not more. We'll definitely pad some cushion time in there to, to make sure that we've got more than adequate storage for the, for what our policy states will keep, which is two weeks.
What, what we find is, in talking with the principals is generally, when, when there's an issue, they know about it within a day. You know, or two. And two weeks is adequate for them to go back and, and see who did what to, type of a deal. And normally we don't have things that go longer than that, but we found two weeks usually works pretty good. And the cameras we'll be putting in are, which, which, what's really, what's really fun about technology is that, you know, when we think about our first cameras in high schools, one in '06, and they were analog. And they were maybe 480 or something like that, I don't know. You know, and the quality of the image was, was good. And then we went to the IP cameras in the elementaries and they're maybe 720. And it's better. And now we're looking at one megapixel and three megapixel, pixel cameras at about the same price as the analog cameras back in 2006. And the image is fantastic. So, you know, technology gets better, but the, the costs is going, same thing with LED lights. LED lights seem to go down in, in, in cost every six months. And, you know, we're sitting around five years ago thinking, do you think we'll ever put LED lights in and into a fixture in the school? And that's our standard. Now, I mean, Highcroft, all the rooms we did, it's standard. We, that's what we do is just put LED lights in there. So it's, technology is fast changing and it's, it's, it's pretty neat, so.
Wonderful report. I don't think there's anybody here on the board or anybody in this room that takes for granted a bond issue. Even though we have very, very supportive community. It's just a delight to see that be approved and then to see what you're able to do with it in that short summertime that you generally have to do what you need to do to schools. And appreciate the pictures and everything else, and I'm not just a board member.
Which is a great lead in. If you, if you haven't been, I'd like to show you a little video we did for our July awards banquet. And first off, I'd like to thank Derek Duncan. He did a fantastic job of pulling this together for us. And the video is to give you just a little bit of a, if you, I don't know if everybody's seen it or not, maybe, I don't, okay? The video is basically my, my way of trying to get my team to understand that there's more to it than just your job. You're part of the Parkway community, you're part of the school you work at, you're, you're, you're part of a bigger entity. And don't just come in to Parkway and say, I'm just a custodian, because you're not just a custodian. So with that, I'm going to ask CJ to crank it up.
I am a role model of character, integrity for students, staff and community.
I am not just a crew leader. I'm moving the district toward a better education through the spirit of excellence.
I'm not just a custodian. I'm a team leader that provides guidance and leadership to individuals for a safe and clean work environment.
We're not just plumbers. We quench your thirst for education.
I'm not just a custodian, but an ambassador of attitude. I believe having a strong relationship with children, staff and families is a necessity. Oh, yes ma'am, if you take this hall and just go straight down and you'll run right into it.
I'm not just an electrician. I'm lighting up the future for our children.
I'm not just a storeroom supervisor. I provide all the parts that make our district a great environment for learning.
I'm not just a custodian. I am a storyteller. I help foster the achievement of the children.
We're not just grounds workers at Parkway. We paved the way for education.
I'm not just a custodian. I'm a patriot leader that cleans for a healthy learning environment.
I'm not just a locksmith. I make learning safe.
I'm not just a director of facilities. I'm a team builder.
I'm not just a Parkway painter. I make learning colorful.
I'm not just a project planner. I'm looking out for the future of our schools.
I'm not just a food service driver. I deliver lunches to thousands of kids per day so that they're well nourished and can excel.
I'm not just a custodian. I'm an educator. I help students become capable, curious and confident learners.
I'm not just a safety guy for the district. I also inspect the playgrounds to keep the kids safe while ensuring they have a good time.
I'm not just a store employee. I provide support and supplies to keep the schools running.
I'm not just a custodian. I'm a mentor. I help develop behavioral attitude and perfect relationships among students.
I'm not just an HVAC tech. I make learning cool.
I'm not just a mailroom driver. I transfer knowledge on the information highway at 40 miles per hour.
I'm dressed for comfort and wired for speed.
I'm not just a carpenter. I'm building rooms for knowledge.
I'm not just a construction supervisor. I'm also helping build future leaders.
I always get emotional. It's my team, so. And those are all the folks that I work with, and it's a good group. But I do have something for you. Not often I give gifts. And that's one of the T-shirts from our July banquet. So we just wanted to have that as a memento from the summer and hope you enjoy it. It's, everybody likes the neon colors now. It reminds me of when my kids were, it was 20, 25, it reminds me of when he was five. So 20 years ago when neon was in, I think it's making a comeback. So again, thank you for the opportunity to come up and talk and, and thanks for supporting us. We really appreciate it.
Well, I know some of us have been on the board for a few years and Dee can remember, and I can too, when there were buckets in rooms and seemed to have a lot of leaks. And there's been a tremendous improvement in our facilities over the last decade. So thank you so much, Mike, to you and your team.
Thank you.
Great job. And I think we're going to see three more summers of activity, right? So with this bond, so it's, it's just the beginning. Yes, that's true. That's right.
15.0 work session, there is none. 16.0 call for special meeting, none. 17.0 next scheduled closed session. The next anticipated closed session will be held on August 26, 2015 at 6:00 PM at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 18.0 recess, none. 19.0 closed session, none. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting tonight? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0, and I hope someone has a, an umbrella. Thank you very much.